So open the meeting to the public. Hope you may address the board on any topic at this time. Give another chance, opportunity at the end of the meeting to also address the board. If you want to address the board, please state your name to flip the card.
Do you want me to stand up or?
Whatever your comfortable.
Okay. My name is Amanda Frostick. I am here on behalf of the North Country Skating Club. We come to you tonight in regards to a contract issue. More or less wanting clarification on how the contracts work with the rink. We were under the, well, understanding that we were to submit our contracts within the summer to, for the following year to get our bids in for our ice times and for the ice rink rates. We found out this past weekend that the men's recreational skating league had already submitted their contract and it was approved by the rink manager to begin their ice time at 8:00. So let me just kind of back up and give you some of our times that our skating club skates. We skate on Monday and Friday evenings. Mondays, we skate from 5:30 till 9:00. They clear the ice for us before we begin at 5:30 and then they clear the ice for us once they resurface the ice one more time later in the evening. Because by the time the end of the evening rolls around, it's just not safe for the bigger girls at the end of the night to go out there and skate. On Friday nights, we skate from 5:30 until 8:15 and we gave up the resurfacing throughout that time. So we have clear ice at the beginning of the night and then they do not resurface the ice again for the rest of the night. So we found out this weekend that the men's league was able to submit a contract early and they are now allowed to be on the ice starting at 8:00. So we would just like some clarification as to, one, when our contracts allowed to be submitted because we were not given a heads up that they could have been submitted early or else we would have had our contract in last week because we were still skating here using and paying for this ice last week. And, two, we are a children's organization. We are taking, that men's league is taking time away from a children's organization via only 15 minutes, but in the grand scheme of things, 15 minutes when you're concerning the safety of almost 100 children in our skating club? I mean, are we weighing the pros and cons of these contracts? So is it first come, first served? Is it, well, if you hurry up and get your contract in, we'll kind of, we'll take care of you and then let the others, we'll see? If we submit a contract right now, not saying we're going to do this, but let's say we wanted different times. Let's say we put in a contract that ran into the hockey team's times. Would we be allotted that time because that's what the men's skating league has done? So we were just hoping for some clarification on that issue. Where do we go from here? Some other issues have come up along the way, but if we could start there.
These are all good questions. I just was informed of this about three hours ago, this whole issue. So what I will do is I'll ask the department head of that, who Steve Peters, our minister there, he's in charge of recreation, and he's been in contact with the facility manager and he'll try to answer your questions, I guess. Steve?
Sure. So the men's hockey league, as the board now knows after this past fall, had substantial issues starting at 8:15. Because for decades prior, I think this league's been going on for 30 some odd years, it's been at 8:00. Last summer, I think where the miscommunication happened, Jess being new, she was told men's hockey starts at 8:15, but what she didn't know at the time was that at 8:00, they start the Zamboni and clean the ice between 8:00 and 8:15. So when figure skating asked for that extra 15 minutes, she saw no issue in approving that time. There was nobody around who was here in years prior to correct that error and that's how that, that's how that got done.
Can I?
Of course. I mean, it's not a dialogue, but it's going to be.
That coming from my personal conversations with Jessica, that is not, she knew exactly, it was clearly explained to her by many of us, and past members of the board that aren't on the board this year, exactly that they would be giving up 15 minutes of time for the safety of the kids, that they would not be getting on the ice until 8:30 because we would be getting off at 8:15.
Sure.
And the ice would be cleaned.
Okay.
I just want that on record, that just because you're stating something different, that that is not what was directly spoken personally to myself, from her to me.
Okay. So this board have made a decision in the fall about the men's hockey league, that you were adamant that we not lose that revenue stream and that this department was to do whatever was necessary in order to keep them functioning and effective.
So you're going to jeopardize the safety of ADA of our village community members? All these children are from our, our community. For these recreational men leagues that travel from, not our community, from Lake Placid, Canada, so you're going to take away from our children?
And we're a big revenue.
We are a big revenue, I think we're like the second highest for the civic center for a men's recreational league. That's what you're saying.
I think you ought to get your time back. My side.
Thank you.
Well, let's make it more clear. We're going to make sure you get your time back because you deserve that time. There's no way they should have taken away.
I need to, I need to make a point of clarification here as this board was very firm in that we were not to lose the men's hockey league program. This board made that decision.
We gave the expense of perhaps like somebody else, it's a customer.
Okay, so it's, if you want to go against that contract, you will lose the men's hockey league quite potentially.
Well, so be it. I'm telling you, we're going to do this the right way.
I just, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
The women's skating program had that time.
Yeah.
I don't know how this all happened, but they're going to get their time back.
We have, our club, respectfully.
Yep.
We have been here for 40 years. Forty. Men have been here for 30, however.
Okay. Somehow became a bad person here, guys. I don't know how I do that.
But we are dealing with children. But I don't understand, for the men's recreation, I mean, if even if they pushed it back 15 minutes, can they stay here 15 minutes longer? We're not asking them to leave the building. I mean, it's just.
If the, if the men's league starts 15 minutes or however long later, are they losing any time? Or, or let's say they want the ice for an hour or two or whatever their contract states, do they lose any ice time by starting a few minutes later? So then, I guess like the issue just seems.
All we did was.
I guess the issue with, with the hockey was that they were getting out very late and that was the issue that they brought up.
It's pushing, it's pushing midnight. And so all we did was put it back and honestly, I thought it was as per the board's direction. Clearly, that's not the case now, but.
They were pretty adamant last, last year when this happened.
That was my impression. All we did was put it back to the way it was for the last number of decades. And so there is multiple, multiple, multiple hours scattered throughout the, this skating week that are available. Now, as somebody who's very familiar with running leagues and programs in a finite facility, I can tell you that if this facility was maximized, if all the marketable hours were maximized and there was no other time anywhere else, that, and we made the same decision, we'd be wrong. Absolutely wrong. However, there is an amazing amount of time still available for children. And I'll be honest with you, if, if you're concerned about ice quality and safety, I'm concerned that you're eliminating a nice cleaning time and that's the first I've heard of it. I think maybe we need to be implementing one in the middle of your session if, if there is a concern of safety. Because we don't, we don't control the program. You do.
If the, if the ice, and I think this issue has been brought up in your meetings prior, if the ice were in the condition it should be, which since, since people have come to this meeting, I mean, I'm going to just say that Aaron's going to do a job and the ice has been a lot better, but if the ice is in, the quality it should be when we get on the ice, that's one thing, but it's not. It hasn't been consistently throughout the season. So that's an issue. Splitting up different days of the week that the kids are coming to the rink in the winter just to accommodate, again, a recreational men's league hockey, for the men, it's an inconvenience of 15 minutes on a Friday night. So instead of getting off the ice at 11:30 and leaving the rink whenever, they're, it's pushing it back 15 minutes. This affects our whole club because we have to give ice time to, to all ADA members equally. So it does, it doesn't just affect our last ice session. So to come on a different night of the week, when we prepare, this finite facility only has one show a year. So to split up the kids to come on different nights in the middle of the winter to accommodate, again, a men's league, sounds a little ridiculous. I, I just think, why can't the men's, has, has the amount of time that's open been presented to the men's league?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And have they also been encouraged to?
Once again, this board was very firm about not losing that contract, but now that that's clearly changed.
I think it's important to know too that our small.
But last year, they didn't have a contract, right?
And we also.
They just signed the first contract, I think, this year.
I can't, I can't tell you that. I wasn't here at the beginning of last season.
Well, I think so. I think it was the first time they.
Well, I don't understand the issue with the men's club. If they were at 8:15, why can't they go back to 8:15?
I think because for the very same reasons that this group doesn't like the change, I think they don't like the change either. And so this board and the people that work here will not, there, there won't be a good amicable solution other than what we thought was put it back to where it was last year, but that, that clearly is now at odds with, with everybody else, so.
Honestly, we fought for years to try to get that 15 minutes and we were pushed and told, no, no, no. So we obliged to do it. We finally got them to agree to do it and it made a world of difference.
Right.
For the safety.
Without chill for our kids.
I can appreciate that.
And that's the reason we're fighting so hard, to keep that 15 minutes.
But I, I hope you can appreciate the very mixed messages that have been received at all levels for this issue. So, and I hope you can appreciate the fact that no matter how hard our staff works to put together anything out here, that there is no winning in this situation. I hope you can at least recognize that.
Can I say?
Okay.
The win, the winning is about the money for the rink. And if we get our 15 minutes and they get their extra 15 minutes, that's more money. Instead of taking it away from us, which would be less money.
But they're not, they've told us.
They're going to pull out if they happen to stay.
They've told us they will not play. So one of the differences that I'm very familiar with is in league play, you have to have four teams when you play a league and that's what they do. You don't have four teams and things kind of disintegrate quickly. In other words, you either have to play one game a night or two games a night, which guys over 40 probably don't have the stamina. So what then happens is the league collapses. What their coordinator is telling us is that, look, I got guys that are saying they don't want to play that late. They work at 7:00 in the morning, they're there all day, then they got to play until 11:30 at night. And that's what they're saying. And so what he's telling me is that if they can't get it back to where it was, that they will either go elsewhere or the league will fall apart. And in the fall, that message was presented to us loud and clear. This board had decided very firmly that they did not want to lose that revenue stream, did not want to lose that client, that we were to accommodate them as best we could this year and then bring it back to the way it was. So that's the directive we're under, that's the directive that, you know, we were clear on and clearly, they didn't, they don't want to do that on, you know, to the negative effect of the skating club.
So what happens?
We were told about that though.
So what happens?
Because it didn't involve.
With their contract then? If they'd have signed the contract first.
Yep.
They'd have got the time, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, because the directive was pretty clear to not lose the men's league.
So it was like a behind the scenes deal?
I can't tell you that. Yeah, I guess. I mean.
Because we weren't aware of it and we were aware of.
But that's the thing, if you're managing the rink. To be doing, to be cutting deals behind the scenes just sounds problematic. I mean, that's why you have people showing up here and why you feel attacked because you're managing something where you're, you're cutting deals behind the scenes.
Once again, their directive was very clear, ma'am. I'm sorry, you know, like, there's, there's no good outcome here. So we're going to cancel a contract and we're going to be faced with a shortage on Friday nights, potentially. Now, maybe they'll stay, maybe they'll, you know.
Well, what happens if they leave?
Well, I don't know. They didn't leave two years ago when it went to 8:00. You know what I mean? And they didn't leave for the 40 years prior.
We are, we are exploring other options.
I'm sure. Yeah. So if, if the board is interested in, in canceling that contract, if there's a, a resolution or some decision that we're all clear on, be happy.
Well, the manager, the manager should have come up and said to them, we got a contract in hand here. Where's your contract?
And let me be clear, no one directed her to have that contract signed. I, I would not have done it right now. I think it would have been a little bit more equitable later on, but either way, the directive was pretty clear to me.
Right, but the miscommunication comes from, are you, are you managing your rink based on contracts or are you managing your rink based on deals cut behind the scenes, which you just said.
Contracts. Should have been aware of it.
But you just said you're cutting deals behind the scenes.
So we know as a club who needs to submit a contract every year, when do we need to submit our contract?
Is it written procedures anywhere for that?
Never has been. This village has been okay with that for however long it's been okay with that.
When this was brought to my attention last year, you know, I hadn't been involved in this for a number of years and I thought, you know, I've got granddaughters that are in this type of organization, one of us in this one a few years ago. And so I'm thinking like, well, little girls, probably 15 minutes is a big deal for them and these other guys were just, you know, pretty abrasive about it. So I, my feeling, my initial reaction was, signing the local girls that are doing this thing, you know, the little kids that are doing this, I, I went along with that. We were severely criticized by people in this room. You're going to lose this contract, you're, she's going to screw this all up and those people are going to leave and then we're going to lose all this money? Every week, we get questioned on how much money is the ice skating rink losing every, every year because we have to subsidize it on a tax money. And I personally have felt, as I did the last 12 or 13 years that I've been on this board, that it's not a big price to pay in the overall scheme of things for what the village puts into this. Was it about 30, 40,000 a year or something? 20 years ago, it was about 8,000 is what we had to, we had to kick in for this. And so they came up with this thing, now, again, criticized all summer long about we're going to lose this big account with the men's league from people on this board and people in this room. And I mean relentlessly. So they signed that deal and they, they did it and then I guess the facility manager thought that that's what the board's thing was and the rest of the hierarchy in the village thought it was more important not to lose that contract.
In my words.
I don't have a problem with going down.
My words weren't, especially out of another organization, so we can just please one of them.
That's right.
I, I did state that I didn't want to lose any business and I wanted all three to be happy. And this wasn't the way to do it.
So I guess we, we shouldn't, I mean, we definitely shouldn't accept this contract because for one thing, it's going to affect what they've got this year and the time that they got.
It should be all, everybody should.
Everybody should have a fair shot. I mean, if there's going to be, I mean, you can't put in a contract early, I mean, everybody should have the same opportunity.
Should be all done at one time.
Yes.
June 1st, the contract's going to be in or something like that, whatever.
No matter what.
They're laying out that they can plan the season.
Right.
And know what the revenue's going to be.
Right.
So the question is, you know, if we lose that other contract, where's that money going to come to make up for it? Or if we lose your contract, where's the money going to come? You know, it's, you see where we are, we're stuck right in the middle of this. And I thought, to be honest with you, the whole thing boiled down to 15 minutes, which seemed pretty petty to me. And when you look at a petty little thing, you're looking at, okay, you got big guys, you know, kids over there, you know, 15 minutes, that's what I thought of it.
It's actually 25 minutes.
Well, whatever, you know what I'm saying.
Out of a 45 minute on session, 25 is huge.
All right, so.
So what's the board's, I'll close the meeting to the public right now. What is the board's wishes on this? We have one contract that's been signed. I don't know how binding it is. What do you want to do?
We nullify the contract.
Yep.
I'll nullify the contract.
Okay.
And give the skating club their 85.
Like a motion?
And then hopefully the men's club will, will come back at 85.
I'll make a motion that we give the, no, no, wait. You got to nullify the contract is what we need the motion for. That's what Dale said, right?
Yes.
Dale made a motion. Wait, wait, let's get this straight. You're making a motion to nullify the contract with the men's club.
That was on, yes.
Okay, Benny seconded it. Mr. Arnold seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now that leaves us with, well, technically probably no contracts and lawsuit maybe, but anyway. So then we will have to establish when the contracts have to be submitted.
Correct.
What date do you want to establish for that? Mr. Peters, what would be a good date for that?
The suggestion of June 1 is just fine.
June 1 is good?
Yep.
Okay. All contract proposals have to be submitted by June 1 and they will be awarded within what, a week or two after that or?
I mean, it's more substantial than that to actually do the scheduling. It's not so much reading a contract, it's actually understanding the dates throughout the entire season and how that.
Okay, so they need about a month for that?
I, I would think.
Okay, contracts will be, I'll need a motion for this. You have the contracts, submit, contract requests submitted, ice time requests submitted by June 1 and they will be awarded no later than July 1st. So moved.
Just like add to that and they can't be any sooner than June 1st.
Well, they can be sooner, they just won't be acted on. You know, you can have an envelope sent before, same as any other bid thing, but June 1st is going to open the bids and start awarding. Okay, a motion in a second for this. Did you get them? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. Okay, so now, nobody's got anything.
I know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
It's for the children.
Who are you?
It's all about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting of March 4th. Are there any errors or omissions noted?
Take a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bills are sent.
We have two additions this evening. One is to clean town for $92.44. It's for, for the fire department, it's a CPAP set, mask and electrodes. And the other one is business card in the amount of 2,017.65. It's for two computers, one's for the code officer and one's for the historian. Expenses for Nikon for trustees Dart and LeBlanc and a belt tilt kit for the HP mapping printer.
Okay. Okay, any comments on the bills? Any motion to go to debate?
Second.
A motion in the second. Motion by trustee Arnold, seconded by trustee Menard. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Reports the mayor and trustees, I request an executive session. Oh, no, okay, yes. Correspondents?
We have one letter this evening from Dodge Memorial Library. Mayor Bathett and village trustees, the Dodge Memorial Library Board of Trustees would like to appoint Everett Larson to the trustee position that will become vacant at the end of Clyde Lewis's term on April 30th, 2019. The trustees wish to take this opportunity to thank Father Lewis for 15 years of dedicated service to the library. With his help, his trustee, the library was not only able to keep up with the changing times, but was able to move forward significantly. He will be greatly missed. We wish him the best in all future endeavors. Sincerely, James Giro.
Does that require a board approval? Is that the library board approval?
The library board did approve it and you can appoint it at the organizational meeting. That's when he'll be appointed.
Okay, so we don't have to take any action tonight?
Right now, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other correspondence?
Nothing.
Okay, now we'll get back into the reports here. I request an executive session to discuss employment history of a particular employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then a second, executive session to discuss negotiations.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I have a, another executive session to, I think this is the right one, hire a consultant or discuss hiring a consultant to assist the village with power allocations. Okay, motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
It should be pretty quick. And the last thing I have is resolution 2019-13. This is a approval of an attachment to the New York Power Authority Agency Agreement. We are going to, do everyone get this?
Yep.
There's some, there's a couple pages in the back explaining what it is, but it needs to be done. So I need, let's see. Roll call. No, I need a motion to, to approve the attachment of the amendment.
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Trustee Menard motioned it. Trustee Arnold seconded it. And then we just need a roll, we don't need a roll call.
We have discussion now?
Uh, yes.
Is, is this pretty much, does anyone know if this is pretty much run in the middle contract that we signed before? If anything is different from the years past? How often do we sign these? Do you know how often we sign these contracts?
Very infrequently.
Frequently?
Very infrequently.
Infrequently?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. If we like to go over this a little bit, we can. It isn't the amendment part, isn't the part, you know, we can look at that. It's this attachment here that explains it on the back.
Everything.
Okay. Do you see anything in there?
No, not without legal.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
It's sure to be innocuous then.
Yeah.
I think it's required for association to.
It's a contract to secure future pricing is part of it.
Yes.
And that takes months, but anyway. Any other discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carried. Trustee Dart.
Okay, I've got an item tonight. I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor to sign the revised contract that we have for the clerk administrative position. This is, this is allowing the bay to sign the contract per the agreements that we agreed on in the last executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's carried. Anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Peters. Very helpful in the earlier.
Yes, and I would like to thank you for the work that you put in on this because I know it was, it was not light, light traveling on this one.
Right.
I think sometimes people don't understand what goes on behind to get something like, just shows at a meeting, a little two-minute vote here and it's probably, trustee Dart, I'm guessing probably had ten or twelve hours in it at least, over three or four days and I know I put some time in and everybody else did and it's, uh, it's not easy to do these things. Okay, trustee Menard. Oh, yeah, well, he's got too many things, go ahead.
I have nothing to prove.
Okay, okay, trustee Arnold. All right, you wanna go?
I pass, I got nothing.
Okay, okay, you're done. Okay.
Sexual harassment training for the fire department? It costs, uh, it's gonna cost like a hundred dollars for the training and I'd like to have the village pay for that, don't not come out of fire department budget.
But we are paying for it. This is the same thing we all had, except that they agreed to do another later date over at the station when they could get our budget.
They said it's gonna cost a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So the village will pay for it.
And they didn't have it budgeted, right?
No.
So, somebody's gotta pay for it, so obviously we're gonna pay for it.
Right.
No problem.
Just to make sure that it doesn't come out of fire department budget.
No, it won't. It's mandated by us that they take it, we're just lucky that they're gonna take it.
And also, the fire department now, they have to pay for all their medications, they're at the hospital. We used to get them from the hospital, now they don't get them. And the EpiPens, they like to know if the village will buy four EpiPens, like every two years or four years.
Did he put those in his budget? Cause he put in for a bunch of ambulance restocking supplies because we know that they don't get it from the hospital.
The EpiPens was, was a new request that came to achieve because of problems with some of the techs using hyperdermic needles. So EpiPens are easier, but more expensive.
In other words, an EpiPen can be administered by a lower-rated-
Right.
-ambulance person?
Right.
And the other ones, you'd have to be like a tech or something or whatever.
Right, it takes some better skill as opposed to an EpiPen.
An EpiPen you could take yourself.
Yeah, yeah. How much are the, what are we talking about?
A hundred and ten dollars each.
Probably a hundred and ten dollars each. And that's only every two years or four years, whenever they run out, they're a long waste they have.
Our son, is it too late to add that in the budget?
Take it out of this year's.
Huh?
Just take it out of this year's budget. Current year right now.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's have a motion to, um, purchase four EpiPens for the fire department.
So move.
Have a motion for that, Ben, you started it?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do that this current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, just a suggestion, but I'd like to recognize, uh, uh, three members that took the ENT class, I'd like to give them a certificate from the village, if possible.
Okay.
Also, uh, recognize, uh, the cold water rescue team, there was six of them that took that for training and it was pretty intense. And again, I forgot the names of all of them, but Donna has them, I gave them to her today. And I'd like to send a letter of appreciation to them people.
Okay, um, do you just want a letter or you want like a-
Certificate.
Certificate?
Well, we got the banquet coming up, uh, May.
So do a certificate for all, for all nine?
Yeah, I'd like to see that, if possible. From the village board-
Okay.
And the mayor.
We'll do that.
All ready? And, uh, I just wanna announce that, uh, May fifth is the breakfast for the Rossby Fire Department.
Time? Eight in the morning?
Got all you can eat?
Just like last year.
Just like last year, all you can eat.
Yep.
And also, uh, I went and looked at the library shelving and they look good down there and the guys, village crew did a couple of jobs doing them, putting them up and stuff. I like to thank the guys that did that, Grant and, uh, Zach-
And Brian.
And Brian.
Johnny go down there with you too, Brian? Just you three, right?
Yeah, and they look very good and Susan, well pleased with them and stuff like that. And the last thing I have is, uh, we sold a stove that come out of the blue building?
Yes, bought the money for that this week, fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the people that bought it wanted to test the burners, cause we couldn't tell them if the burners worked or not.
Yeah.
They might test it, well, they tested them and nope, cause we didn't know if they worked or not.
How was it about that, we, we sold it?
It was surplus by the rec center last fall. And then, the village crew used it for their Christmas party and then they put it down at the, down in the sewer plant. Benny and I talked it over, Benny thought it'd be worth about twenty-five bucks and I thought I could get fifty-four and sometimes you can get twenty-five and sometimes you can get fifty, fifty-four, so. Who were the purchasers? Um, place in, um, a landlord in West Shaysie.
Did we give it with us, in fact, documentation?
We'll get it, like I said, I put everything on hold till they see if it worked or not, cause otherwise, we can take it back and throw it out. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Anyone else from the board have anything you wanna say? Uh, other reports? Administrator?
Yeah, we were notified this week that our application to be a clean energy community was approved, um, so that will be a designation we'll hold and, uh, that all, also comes with a five thousand dollar grant, which, uh, I believe we'll be using to buy, uh, LED streetlights, as much as we can, that amount of money. And so there'll be a press release, I think by the end of the week on that and, uh, we'll get that submitted to the, to the local media outlets.
Very good. Anything else? No? Our son, you have anything? Cold enforcement officer?
Well, just, I'm waiting to get hooked up there, they've signed the contract to have them come down and set me up there on their own computer. I'm waiting for that, then we're gonna start our annual inspection through the businesses. So that's a little wrap.
Okay, very good. Mr. Superintendent?
Just working on getting quotes for different projects for the summer and the projects that we got in the wind.
And you wanna tell the village, the board about the, uh, the gate? Electric gate that you got for the sewer plant?
Yes. We ended up getting one of the electric gate openers from ERS for the sewer plant because the gate should be closed every time somebody leaves, it's gotta be a secured facility. So, um, the guys went up and they actually got two of them, they got one for parts and the best one out of the three.
We had that tentatively in the budget for fifty-nine hundred dollars, that's what, something like that's worked and we were able to scratch that, so it was pretty significant. Okay, Susan, anything from the library news?
Uh, the library is very happy with how the basement is coming along, we're finally getting some real good storage room down there, it's just been, you know, leaf boxes in the dry spots for the past hundred years, so having the shelving down there is great, we're gonna start cleaning it up and getting the books onto the shelves down there. Uh, Brian says the lights will be coming in soon, so we'll be able to use that area, it'll be more functional. Someone's been in to give quotes to do the insulation in the attic, which will allow us to store, um, things that we don't use very often up there, cause it's hard to get in and out of there. But you can't even store paint up there right now, it crumbles after a couple of years because of the temperature difference, um, summer to winter. And also, uh, Brian was working with someone to look at the stairs in front of the, uh, library and he and I spoke, if I can get, um, a quote in, any quote, uh, fairly soon, I can write a library construction grant to cover, hopefully, three-quarters of whatever it will cost to get those stairs repaired.
Jenny?
I think the end of May is the deadline to get the grant started and I think we'll be able to get that and cover the quotes of whatever it comes out to be, I don't even know yet.
I looked at those stairs when we were doing the budget requests and stuff and I talked it over with, uh, Brian and it seems that the problem with them is, is that apparently they didn't put a lot of salt on them in the years passed, like maybe the first eighty or a hundred years at the library, we've been putting it on a lot the last ten or twenty years and I'm wondering, this would be actually a library board decision, if we could, if it would be worthwhile to close that door off for the winter and have everybody use the, the side thing which has that, that man-made material that's kind of impervious to salt for where the ramp is and handicapped access and use that as a primary, which, it is a primary interest anyway.
It is a primary.
And just kinda put some cones or some, or something that would look attractive and just use it maybe as like a fire exit or something.
Right, we may have, we have to clear it any way you look at it, cause we have to have two ways in and out of the library.
Maybe not salt it so heavily, it just-
Well, I don't think we should salt it as heavily as we do.
Yeah.
Um, I think that the salt is, you know, dum-dum, pretty heavy and, you know, we could look at, you know, just don't salt it as much, you know?
If it's real icy, just hose it, you know, and if it isn't icy, when it just-
And if it was really icy, say, coming around to the other side.
Yeah.
The other thing is if you put too much salt, particularly on those top landings, the water hits the salt and it splashes to the brick, that was the problem with the brick work that-
Yeah.
We just had to grant two years ago to, uh, repair the brick work, um, by the front door and by the side door, all of that was caused by the salting it. So we definitely have to back off and I did talk with whoever was doing the salting this year about not over-salting too much and not salting too close to the door, I'll go out there with a broom and sweep off the, you know, the landing a couple times a shift is fine to not have too much salt on that.
I think that's kind of a weaker solution.
Well, the salt that you use is just plain rock salt. If you get the salt, that's good for animals and, uh, the environment, stuff like that, it wouldn't be so strong.
Yeah, someone had said that they were a different type of salt perhaps, just for that top, the top part of it. But yeah, at this point in time-
Yeah, cause if you go out them stairs redone and you put, and they're beat out of cement and you put that salt down, that's the end of the stairs, that, that you put on this year.
Who's salting down there, are we doing it or are you folks doing the salting on this, particularly just on the public works section? Right, just on this section? They're doing all the salting.
I think, I think the, uh, water plant used to do it, didn't they do it last year? They were carrying that sulfur on the trunk of the car, remember?
Public Works does it.
They do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
They were using that sulfur weight in the back of the truck.
Yeah, what was, good idea there. No, it was in the, in the, in the police car.
Yeah, that's what it was for, the weight in the back of the truck, or the car.
I didn't know that, I thought they-
Not.
Okay, anything else?
Just wanna remind everyone, village elections are tomorrow from noon until nine.
Okay. I'm sure some of them are well aware of that.
I have one other thing, Mr. Mayor. I forgot the button budget that, I'd like to look again for, uh, a speed limit sign on the industry, one of the digital ones. I think we had the quotes last year, didn't we get them done last year, the quotes, or that?
Last year or the year before.
Yeah. I got the papers in my briefcase here and stuff like that.
How much money are you talking about roughly?
I think they were like eleven, or, no.
And you're talking about the portable ones, right?
Yeah, the portable ones, yeah, you can put it anywhere you want.
I wonder if the sheriff has those, if we can get them on some kind of grant, some kind of law enforcement grant, they've got a lot of money for that type of thing. And we don't have a police department anymore, so we can't put in for grants, I don't believe.
Well, this one was thirty-two hundred, but it's, it's a pretty fancy one.
Yeah.
And there was some other ones-
If it kinda has a radar in it?
Yeah.
Has speeding been a problem on that street?
I think so, cause there's, we don't have no police officers sitting there or whatever and we don't have no-
You're talking about Maple Street, right?